Jake Greer. I'll come around here. This is on behalf of the Community Justice Department and the Board of Commissioners. It's a real honor to be able to present to Lilly her five years of service to Lake County and all of our citizens and very much appreciate it, Lilly. I'm sure you have a few things you'd like us.
Sure.
Sally, Lilly.
Just to Lilly's five short years with Lake County, she's pretty much reorganized our office in that she's the first face they see when they come in to the office and she's also the last face they see when they exit the office. So what Lilly has done is she sets the tone from the minute they walk into the minute they leave for the rest of us to follow, not only just for our routine office appointments, but when they check in from court, Lilly's the first face they see. So Lilly, the way Lilly acts and reacts with our clients and interacts with our clients sets the tone for the rest of their supervision. And it also sets a standard for us to rise to because Lilly's professional and the dedication. So it's been a wonderful four years working in Lake County having Lilly pretty much man the ship.
That's great. And Jake, I know on a couple of occasions I've been asked if I want to do a ten to the meeting or two in Paisley and I know Lilly does a lot of that coordinating on all these different activities for community service. And that program has grown by leaps and bounds to service many, many communities and entities within our communities would not have otherwise received, so it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So, thanks. Good job. Okay. At nine-ten, E-Lin, we have you on and I'm sure there's a lot of folks coming to you update, so we're gonna wait till nine-ten before we call upon your part. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I gave it last weekend off.
Just, we'll just start down through the agenda then. First item, Local Public Safety Coordinating Council Appointment Recommendation, Mr. Jake Greer.
Yes, before the Board is appointing members to our Public Safety Coordinating Council, also known as LIPSY, according to ORS 423560, LIPSY must at a minimum include certain public members and representatives of county and city government departments and local agencies. But the Board needs help in fulfilling the council's purpose. So going through that and knowing, I believe the last time we had this happen there were members we appointed was maybe in 2013 when I first came onboard, but I can't recall the exact year. So the members that need to be appointed would be Commissioner Kessner, Pat Pathick, Public Health Director, Trace Munzer from Lake District Wellness Centers, the Non-Hospital Director, our two lay citizens, Dan Anderson from True Value, and then also Steve Brown from Warner Creek Correction Facility. And then we have two Directors of Victim Services, Anne Kazbon from Crisis Center here in Lakeview, and then Carrie Mangese from Luby Canyon Intervention out of Christians Valley, and then Medical Community, Cheryl Forman.
Looks pretty straightforward, such a huge group. We do have it on the agenda tomorrow for action, so I think we'll go ahead and take action tomorrow on that. You know?
Thanks, Jake.
I don't know how deeply I want to get into some of these other items because we're gonna line Kevin up for quite a little while, I think. If, if the Board, what Kevin?
Some of mine are renewals, so they should take that long for your, just so you're aware.
Okay. Well, I kinda, I kinda set this schedule up in my mind that we wouldn't, we wouldn't keep you any longer than we needed to and we just run through it. So if the Board is okay with it, I'm gonna go down to one of the additions because it's a fairly quick one, I think, in that Joe Max Higgins, who I think all of us are aware now, is the Director of a three-county operation down in Mississippi called the Golden Triangle. And the short version of this is after seeing his interview on Sixty Minutes and what they've done down there for their economic development in, in all their communities and literally hundreds of millions and billions of dollars in new industry, I visited with Dr. Gutierrez from KCC and they have invited him, he's accepted to come to KCC on June 16th to be the commencement speaker. And we, I think, would be in a great spot if we choose to as a Board to take advantage of him being out here. Right now, the proposal would be that he would be here the 14th, 15th, and 16th in Clamath and Lake Counties. Here on the 14th of June, all day, and we'd be able to set an agenda for meeting with him and others in the community, meeting with him and him seeing our community. But there's a cost involved, needless to say, and right now, talking to Dr. Gutierrez yesterday, the cost looks like it would be about $2,500 to Lake County. The overall cost will be shared three ways, Clamath County Board of Commissioners, KCC, and us if we're a Lilly partner. So I guess I would ask for the, we have it in budget, we don't have it by that line item, and I would ask for the Boards either consensus on us moving forward with that or vote or how we want to do this.
I think it'd be a great opportunity to go the drag, we've been in the news for years, well, multiple years, ever since the Great Recession that pulled Mississippi out, a segment of Mississippi out of poverty, but we could definitely utilize some interaction with them with our business communities.
Yep.
Also, I think he's our consultant.
Well, Commissioner, I didn't want to mention that, but we're, in inviting him out, we won't hold that against him, okay?
No, we should so, right?
Yeah.
I'm all for it. One thing I would, would like is if he's gonna be in Lake County, our meeting's set up, maybe we might go get lunch or dinner with him if he's staying over or whatever.
That, I think, would be more than possible. Dr. Gutierrez is willing to bring him over and drag him over here and spend the time. So I think it's more than doable that however we want to make that happen, we can.
So are you looking at paying this out of the economic development lottery dollars?
Yes. Talked to Anne yesterday just to try and be prepared for today and she said we still have ample dollars there for these type of services.
Is she a special, a perfect fit?
Yeah.
Or is, like, on the economy?
So like, consensus, it's okay for me to notify Dr. Gutierrez to move forward with that contract arrangement? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. It's nine-ten. We'll go ahead and start with our Sagegrass Focal Area Mineral Withdrawal update. And you can drag that chair to, uh...
Go ahead and pull the chair.
If you both could introduce yourselves for the record.
You bet. So I'm Todd Forbes, I'm the Field Manager. Sorry, Phil. Got extra chair. I'm the Field Manager for the Lakeview BLM, and Phil, you want to introduce yourself?
Phil Geologist, Geologist for Lakeview District?
Do we need to use this, are we okay?
We'll check with our administrative system.
I think you're okay.
All right.
We just wanted to kinda come down and give you an update. There is a public comment, public open house meeting scheduled for February 22nd at the BLM, so we kinda wanted to give you guys an update and give you an opportunity to ask questions prior to that. Phil has some handouts, he's gonna go ahead and pass out, and we've got plenty for other folks in the room if they want them.
Thanks, Phil.
So what you've got in front of you, there's four maps. We'll take a look at map one. So the very first one, what you'll see is kind of this purple crosshatch. That purple crosshatch is the Sagebrush Focal Area. That is the proposed area of mineral withdrawal. What you'll see overlaying that is you'll see these little blue and kind of pinkish-colored squares. The pink ones are the active, currently active mining claims, the blue ones are inactive mining claims. And so that just kinda gives you an idea of where existing claims exist within the area that's for proposed withdrawal. I think it's, I think it's really important to note that those active mining claims, even if the withdrawal were to go through as proposed, those active mining claims still have a valid existing right, so those valid existing rights would not go away unless they relinquish their claim for those rights.
Within these parameters of their permitted mining?
Correct. So, so the next three maps are essentially just blowups of each of these three geographic areas. So map one kinda shows you the overall, and the next three maps show you the specifics.
Does anybody have questions on the maps before I move on?
For the public, define the difference between active and inactive. Looks like it's probably odd, does one is inactive, but what does that actually mean?
That's simply for designating, active are those who are currently out mining and they have a notice or a plan of operations with our office. Inactive are, are valid existing claims that just, they haven't simply come forward to do any work on, but they have the same rights to do that, they come forward and do active.
Even if the withdrawal goes through?
Yes.
It'd be an active.
Correct.
Yes, they have valid existing rights.
So there is, there is an important distinction there, though. So if the withdrawal were to go through and you have an active mining claim, it's a withdrawal. My understanding that that automatically would, when they go from mining claim to development of mine, that triggers a validity exam. And so right now, without the withdrawal, validity exams are kinda at the discretion of the agency. We can choose to ask for a validity exam, which is still required, but the proponent would have to develop, would have to pay for the cost of that validity exam. If the withdrawal were to go through, that's an automatic trigger. It's automatically triggers a validity exam, therefore, we'd need to pay for a validity exam.
And so I have no idea what that is or what the cost is for something like this.
So it varies pretty greatly depending on what the mineral is, what the, what kind of testing data they have. I mean, you can imagine everything from a, you know, a half-mile-deep gold mine to a surface exposure sunstone mine, great, great difference in...
How about in county operations where we use several of the BLM rock quarries and things like that? I mean, we may, we may have a rock quarry, or you guys have a rock quarry out there, that we might use once every 10 years, whenever we, through our cycle of the, maintaining roads and everything, we need to get some aggregate out there. So how does that affect that?
So that's, that's an important distinction. So this only affects locatable minerals. So aggregate, gravel, all those kind of things are saleable, so those are affected by the other Sagegrass rules in the Sagegrass Plan, but they are not affected at all by this process. This is, this is only from rock mining through 1872 Mining Act.
Okay, so all rock quarries are separate from that?
Correct.
So you can develop new rock quarries if this withdrawal goes through?
So this withdrawal would not have any impact. The current Sagegrass Plan may have some impacts on what we've done in the past. New, new rock quarries, do you wanna jump in there and add anything about our existing quarries in the EA you're currently working on?
We're currently working on EA, I'm looking at all the quarries in the area, and there are some, maybe about half our quarries that are in Sagegrass' general habitat management area, which will go into the new rules for reclamation and mitigation standards and such, we're a little holdback from the, to be able to go forward as a quarry. Because of, like Tom's saying, if this is, this withdrawal is just locatable mining, which, you know, when you get gemstone or gold or copper or silver, those are, so, yeah, this gravel, we're pretty much, we're not in this, and it will be affected somewhat by Sagegrass rules.
Okay, so is perlite considered a gravel, or is it a...
Perlite is also locatable and it is not at all within the Sagegrass Focal Area, it's completely separate, I think.
That's good.
Really separated. So, so what you see on these maps are the only existing claims that have the potential to be impacted in some way. So, I guess, any other questions on the maps and then I can move on, but kinda, kinda talking about the draft alternatives, there are some different alternatives they're considering.
Well, on the maps, are you, are the maps gonna be, it's hard to see, see on here, are you making, if this goes through, will the maps be to the closest corner, or is it gonna actually follow the mapping that the fist model, Oregon fist model has done?
Take a look at map two, two and four. So if you actually look at this purple under, underlayer, you'll see these little corners that jaw in and out. So that is the actual proposed withdrawal, is those little jagged corners, they took it down to the nearest quarter, quarter of the section, 40 acres. So in, in some areas, like you can see down here in the corner, the actual Sagegrass area juts out into an area that's not being proposed for mineral withdrawal, and then in other areas, it actually goes out a little bit further. And so that's, that's a relative edge, but this purple boundary is the actual boundary.
Of proposed withdrawal.
Of the proposed withdrawal.
And that's because they have to put it on legal description?
Correct.
And Sagegrass is on a radius?
Yeah. So if you actually flip over to map three, this is, this is one of those geographic areas that kinda falls in the middle of some existing claims. And so as you can see, some of those claimants would, would benefit, kinda right in the center of that blob, right under number 34, in the center of that blob, some of those claimants would benefit because their claim fell outside of that legal description, therefore it won't be proposed for mineral withdrawal, and some of them falls the opposite direction, so.
That's probably one of the biggest things I've heard come to me, is that it goes outside the parameters of the Sagegrass mapped area. And, and, like you say, I, I don't see that there's winners there, there's some that's just outside the boundary, but there's some losers there because it goes outside of the Sagegrass mapped area. Those other ones are just further out there. But by your guidance, use on the lock line, go to the corner, there's, there's actual losers in the private sector out there that...
Yeah, that's correct.
Are being brought into it, so I would anticipate that there will be people bringing that to get everybody's attention. But if they have a claim already in the Sagegrass?
They still have those valid existing rights if they maintain that claim.
To, to withdraw would include any new claims?
Correct.
I'd like to hear the alternatives.
Okay. So there are five different alternatives that are being considered in detail. I believe there's about 13 that were considered but eliminated because they were, they're too close to an existing alternative or, or not viable. There are three that, that you guys really, for our geographic area territory, probably need to focus on. The first is the no-action alternative. Of course, that is continuation of the status quo, there would be no additional lands withdrawn for mineral entry, so they'll all still be open. Fairly self-explanatory. There's the proposed action, which the proposed action would withdraw all of the stuff that's in purple for mineral entry. Those, those claims that are still within that purple area would still have their, keep their valid existing rates. And then there's what they call the high mineral potential alternative. So that high mineral potential alternative, there's a, we've actually just got these delivered this morning, so they came in for our meeting. This is the report from NRCS for the, or actually, I guess it was USGS, excuse me, for the mineral resources throughout this entire proposed withdrawal area, so they created those mineral potential mineral resources as high, medium, and low. And so a high mineral potential alternative would remove any areas that have high mineral potential from the proposed withdrawal. So those areas would be pulled out of the withdrawal, the only areas with moderate or low mineral potential would be withdrawn.
And also, like on that, locatable minerals that stated are, minerals that have value to itself, sunstone, gold, silver, perlite, et cetera. Common, what I used to call common minerals are, celebrant minerals are sand, rock, gravel, et cetera. Then you have least load minerals on the, least load mineral act, that's not included.
That is not included.
Geotherm, gas, petroleum.
Yep. Correct. So all we're talking about here is locatable.
Yep. So no gold mines on our horizon?
Well, actually, this, these claims here, miners draw, are viable for gold, so there is that, and then the remainder of these are sunstone.
And on the boundaries of the claims, what about access, roads, et cetera, et cetera, incinerated uses?
As far as new development?
Well, unless they don't have gold mine, they need to have a new rule put in or things of that nature that would come through. It's not mining itself, but it's incinerated activities.
Yeah, those, those other activities, I mean, if it's incident mining, you know, those, those things that occur on that claim that are incident mining kinda go under the 3809 regulations for, for mining. If it's something that's off of that claim, but incident mining, I think we would probably be following our regular Sagegrass guidelines. Not quite sure exactly how that fits in if it's off their claims up there.
Yes, but the interesting thing about this, that claims actually include all the roads that are actually...
On a miner's draw, for a gold mine. Yeah, I mean, there is, there is the possibility with some of these smaller sunstone mines that in order to get to the site, there needs to be some road development or something like that.
So talk without having it mapped on here, I'm curious, we're talking about the different things if the full withdrawal was to go through, which personally I don't believe it will, but regardless of that, I, I don't see anything, or I haven't seen anything that kinda references the withdrawal area and WSAs. You know, it seems like we might have layers and layers of restrictions.
So wilderness study areas are already withdrawn?
Right.
They were withdrawn through, through a similar process?
But where they're adjacent to this, kinda the Commissioner Kessner's question, you know, is we look to access and do things, are, are any of the WSAs, I don't have it in my mind.
There are no, yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, so there are no WSAs within the proximity of these claims.
Okay.
You know, we do have existing WSA within Sagebrush Focal Area, but I don't believe those numbers are in their calculations, I believe, because those are already drawn, they've already accounted for those.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so to give you an idea of the high mineral potential alternative, for Oregon, high mineral potential lands constitute 66,000 acres. And I have a, I apologize for not making you copies of this map, and it's a little hard to read, we'll have this hopefully blown up for the next meeting, but these, these areas you see in blue, up here's, up here's Lake County. These areas up here in blue are around the sunstone mining area, and then I believe this is down just north of Plush. So you can kinda get an idea of within Lake County areas, areas that have high mineral potential fall, that'll give you kind of an idea of what would come out of that withdrawal, proposed withdrawal for the high mineral potential alternative.
So the blue is exclusive due to high mineral potential?
Those, those areas that would not be withdrawn under the high mineral potential alternative?
So I'm, I'm really hoping for our mining community that, you know, there's a positive outcome, but that's not completely making sense to me if we're talking about protections, that we have exceptions. I mean, I want us to have exceptions, but it's kind of ridiculous. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think they were just looking for a range of alternatives, and, you know, it's important to note that even though there's only five of these alternatives that are there, that we're looking at the effects of, you know, the Secretary of Interior is the one that will ultimately be making the decision on what gets chosen, and they could, they could, they could choose different pieces from each alternative. You know, it's, it's, I don't know if you're aware of this, but it's important to note that there were two other states that developed their own alternatives, the state of Idaho and the state of Nevada, and they, in Nevada's case, they chose to pick other areas that was within priority habitat, that was not SFA, and exchanged high mineral, high and moderate mineral potential areas with other areas. So there were kind of a swap of protections, if you will, and then Nevada alternative, you know, in Idaho alternative, they just chose to remove several of those areas in their alternative, high and, high and moderate.
So they essentially put something in that will allow it to mitigate?
Like Nevada's case, they did. In Idaho's case, I didn't see that. In Idaho's case, it was just proposed of splitting it down the middle and taking half and leaving half. You know, for, for us here in Lake County, our impact's Sagegrass either way, based, based on the scenarios we've seen of mineral development for the last 40 years. In my opinion, it's pretty unlikely that we're gonna see a lot of large-scale industrial development. You know, our mining operations tend to be pretty small. Even something on the scale of Tucker Hill is still considered a pretty small mining operation. And so from a, from a Sagegrass protection perspective, either of those alternatives still allows for a significant amount of protection for Sagegrass.
Well, Todd, you've been kinda saying, you're saying, well, we've been kinda saying, which is the footprint's pretty much small, and the future footprint is too, but the fact of the matter is, is if, if we're gonna protect against large-scale development potentially, we're gonna be allowed to under these quality alternatives.
Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting. I, I don't see, I, I support the no-action alternative because of the footprint of the mining in Lake County, in proper Lake County, is relatively small, and the only, only variance from that that I support is, is that there's an alternative, that there'd be mitigation allowed, so that there could be development made to mitigate that out before Sagegrass habitat, because we're plenty smart enough to do that, we're plenty smart enough to help, to help out the environment out there. And the other thing is, is this is such a broad brush to take, if, if we're, 1.9 million acres, and a lot of this is in low-density areas in Sagegrass. And, and it doesn't make any sense to me to lock those low-density areas up, do absolutely nothing. We don't know what the future's gonna bring. That, that study's a good study, but somebody's lawled and stumbled across something out there that nobody's ever seen. We need to be able to take advantage of that for economic development or many other things for our communities. So for me, no-action alternative, because we are not destroying the ground out there, we have not killed the Sagegrass habitat, in my opinion, and I spend a lot of time on the desert. And if we can't get that, then we need a mitigation clause in there so that if something does in the future, somebody finds some. If it's in a low-density area, I mean, why not mitigate that out and allow it? If it's in the middle of the left, we understand, everybody understands, the landowners around, the government, the citizens, they understand they're not the most, they're terrible lack. But it's just too much of a broad brush of just... But it's just too much of a broad brush of just taking any opportunities away for one species. It's just, just that, I'm sorry, you know, my ban, but that's my, my one.
And I think that's been an issue, Commissioner. I don't, you know, I don't know how the board would vote if we were asked to vote, but I agree with you, the no action is preferred one for me as well. And that the, the not having a mitigation opportunity has really been a missing element in this.
So it's important to note, so with, with our federal regulations, we don't have the ability to require mitigation for locatable minerals. But under the new state statute, it's for a rig if for sage grouse, every mining operation is now required to get Department of Geological, DAMI, a mining permit. And under that state statute, if, once they get a permit, if it's within priorities sage grouse habitat, which is even more broad in sagebrush focal area, then a mitigation is required through state regulation. So it's, so it's already required?
And Todd, that's, you're exactly right, there's a lot of work going on that at the state level. But now we have BLM, which is not going to be followed underneath those regulations, correct? Because if this is withdrawn, then the state regulations and rules don't apply.
Right, because they would not, they would, if, if somebody were to discover a new source in an area withdrawn, they wouldn't be able to develop that.
You're correct. Yeah, so that, that's sort of frustrating to take a, a state map, state biologists that are the experts on sage grouse, and go broader than what the good science is there. So BLM's going broader than what the good science is, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm a little frustrated with that, that side. I know it.
Yeah, I understand your point.
You, you can't do a thing about it at your level, but that somebody in DC can rubber stamp something and just throw out all the work that's been done here at the state level or local level, it's just sort of frustrating. I don't mean to be the messenger too much.
I'll confer with colleagues, I don't like broad brush, but I understand the intent is to keep the grouse off the Adventure Species Act, if it was ever a replacement of Adventure Species Act. The ESA is more like litigated than any other congressional law there is. And it would block everything, but at the same time, it, it's mixed. I worked on the sage comp for the state, and we had to give a little bit to get something. And that something was to keep it being listed. As best that we provide, have the habitat, safeguard the habitat ourselves, and I have the federal government do, and from the DC level, and under ESA litigation potential. But it's, it's mixed there. I agree that broad brush is, a broad brush, and could, or give it some activities that would be beneficial without being overly damaging, but at the same time, we have to keep that for all the Adventure Species Act, because it's a law change that gets on the ESA.
Yeah, very awesome.
So, so I do have to say one thing, because they did sort of mention good science out of where you, which might, I do, and I think the board, I don't think, we do disagree with the mapping, that they, that it was way too, we have within Lake County, they're mapping some of the low density areas. I don't believe there's ever been a sage grouse there myself, but it's taken it's development, properties and everything. So we, I believe their mapping, put a law for them to redo that mapping.
That was with the sagebrush focal area maps?
Yeah, it, it just, just isn't as accurate as I think it needs to be. And so then you throw in there where you guys are going outside of that to square it up with the plot line.
So, the question, actually, we're still pressing ODFW to refine the mapping. They just, to my perspective, there's a distant jump between the local biologist and the GIES person. They did put a fact there, and the GIES person did a weightness. Like some of Lake housing area, residential area, is in that weightness. We're still pressing ODFW to modify, correct, refine whatever, their mapping. Now, we're assuming that the federal government is reliant on the state mapping. So if that map, if the state mapping gets refined, will the legal description of the federal government be refined?
That's a good question. I think it would depend on where this, where it falls in this process. If there were major revisions now to the state mapping, that likely could, we could probably go back and reconsider that if it's after this process has gone through, then I don't know, agency would have to look at that and see, see what level of work would be required to go back and redo.
Well, it's not a level of work, because you are our public employees. It's prioritization, you know, the level of work to get that right.
I'm laughing because they went outside the boundaries, just to square it up now, so I'd be surprised if they retract anything. They had the opportunity now in the low density areas to, instead of coming outside of it, just come back to the inside plot line.
Good point.
And so I would say, our odds of them changing it would be very slim, because they extended it instead of.
They did, they did go inside and stuff.
Didn't, yeah, yeah.
There, there are areas where you guys go inside.
I understand, Todd, I'm sure.
But it's, in, in this particular geographic area, I believe there's more that went outside than inside.
Well, not to completely change the subject, but just out of curiosity, and he wins here as well, have you all been hearing anything from DC as far as, you know, I haven't had my thumb on all the appointments, because a lot of what's going to happen is going to be based upon appointments. From the CEO director, to our new secretary of interior, et cetera, et cetera. Have you all gotten any information?
We've gotten very little information this time of year, whatever year, you've got a new administration coming in, and you've heard a lot of the media, and Twitter, and everything else that's going on. We've been given very little information, very little information.
Yeah, it's going to take a while to get settled.
It's going to take a while, particularly for us, because we don't have a director right now, we have an acting. And there are several, we've had several people retire, several people, of course, move on to other positions, things like that. So, not only with that hierarchy of administration, and also the Department of the Interior, BLM has got some empty spots as well.
Yeah.
So it takes a while, too.
Well, Commissioner Winthrop and I wrote a letter to the President, and the Secretary of Interior to appoint Commissioner Shallow as director of U.S.
Right, right.
I wondered where he was going with that.
Come on down, come on down.
Well.
That was for his birthday.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, there you go. I've been, I've been around that close enough to know that's someplace you want to stay totally away from. But, you know, it's, it will be interesting, and I know we can't speculate, we're dealing with what is real in front of us right now. I guess we can be very hopeful that, that we'll have the ability to have some confidence decisions made. One of the things that I was just going to mention, because as Commissioner Kessner alludes to all the time, we're videoed, so the people are seeing this, we haven't talked about the length of the withdrawal, if, if that was to be selected, maybe you could say.
Twenty, twenty years is the current withdrawal. The secretary has the discretion to choose any length less than 20 years, but a withdrawal of this magnitude is limited to 20 years.
And typically, it's like the Sheraton Refuge hasn't been withdrawn nearly 20 years, just renewed. Once something is already on the table, traditionally is on, well, it goes out to print a comment, but that's kind of, you know, might appear in the newspaper, or might not, but usually once something is established, it's established.
Are you referring to WSAs that are going to be there forever?
That's, that's another sort of point, but WSA was never intended to be permanent.
Interesting, I know. So Todd, the meeting is the 22nd. The public and others can comment on the EIS at that time. So, so what is in general about the whole thing, and what does that process, and what do we, people need to do?
So we'll be, we'll be accepting comments on this environmental impact statement for the withdrawal. That's what that meeting is focused on. There, we're, we're only accepting written comments, so it's, it's not a, a hearing, it's an open house. People can come, ask questions, look at maps, get more detailed information. And we'll have comment sheets, if they want to submit written comments there, they can. If they want to go back and comment and submit comments, they can do that as well. Do you remember the date, is the end of March? End of March is the, end of the comment period, so there's.
So, so those comments have to be specific to something in the EIS?
Correct.
So that, I guess, talking in general frustration with maps and all that, would that be something that you, that the EIS acknowledges maps when they're in there? Can people say they disagree with that, and that comment be allowed, or?
Brad, I accept comments from the public all the time. So, I mean, any, any kind of comments you guys want to give us are there, just realize that the focus of this meeting is, is that EIS.
That's what I see.
And, and especially us at this level have a limited amount of ability to deal with some of those other comments, so.
Yeah, but I was thinking that for the comments to go very far, they have to be specific to something in the EIS.
Likely.
So, another, I've got a question. The new state director, is she going to be around?
We're hoping to get her out here. I don't know if she's going to be here on the, the 22nd or not, but she's very interested. I don't know if you know Jamie very well, coming from Montana. Personally, I'm very happy to have her as our state director, I think she's going to do a great job. She cares about the people, cares about the land, very knowledgeable.
I've heard nothing, but it's, I, I know her through Steve Ellis.
Ah, yes.
And I've heard nothing but good things. My concern is with the, the, from, from early in life through current, the background is not timber, which is an LNC issue, which affects our state. It's not, as I understand, range, which affects our whole district here. A, a lot of things that the background's not there are very impactful to our state.
She's, she's a smart cookie.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
That's why she has staff?
That's right.
Yep.
Very knowledgeable people. But our meeting on the 22nd, I believe it's the only one we're having in Oregon.
Correct.
So, I might want to get, yes. Wow, they chose Lakeview.
Excellent. So expect a, a large number from Meyer County, and Arden County, and Baker County?
Likely.
Likely, likely. And the setup of that meeting, a lot of people expect sort of talking heads in the front and the big auditorium kind of thing. And we found that it works better if we have sort of stations, so that people can ask those one-on-one questions, and get the information that they specifically need, rather than being maybe overwhelmed by other people taking over the show. So, that's the way this meeting is set up, sort of, they call it, I think they call it world market, but it's several stations, so that people can ask their specific questions to those experts.
And each station will have the same answer?
We bet, I hope so. If it's the same question, yes.
Well.
Well, I, I think it's wise to have the stations, because they're going to just say that diffuses things.
And it gives everybody the opportunity to look and be addressed, as opposed to certain individuals nominating the chair. I got two things. One, you said that when, when outside, it's usually just to square it up, like 40 acres, that's much more than 40 acres.
Yeah, and I, I was looking at that and wondering myself, I think what it is, is they probably have a, a formula automatically calculating that information, if you look back at page three.
Map three.
Map three, excuse me.
That's a lot of map blocks.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of touching the boundary there, and then the, the thing to note is, these, these aren't in a normal map projection that you're used to seeing. It's in a latitude longitude projection, so those are stretched this way. And I think what you're seeing, I think those are 40 acre blocks, but I think what you're seeing is an artificial map stretch from that latitude longitude projection. When you, when you look at things in like a USGS quad map, those are in UTM, and they're not stretched this way. And latitude longitude does this weird stretchy thing, so.
And how's that going to play out on the ground?
Well, every map is a geographic representation of what's really on the ground, none of them are accurate.
But instead of stretching this way, maybe this way. The other comment is, there's a Oregon Broad and a Badger Committee meeting on the 23rd in the morning, and there's such a matter of education and telecommunication, that I'll always strive to make those meetings where the Department of Education is there, because I like to kick the shoe and remind them of Lakeview, of Lake County. So I may not be there until the 22nd.
Correct.
But I'm sure my two colleagues.
I unfortunately won't be there, I have surgery scheduled for the day before, so.
I'm actually not going to be there either, you know, we have a town.
That's a good thing we have this meeting.
Yes. There's a winner, so that's going to be.
I'm trying, I'm trying to think of a reason not to go now.
I won't be there either.
No, Denise is going to be.
I, I have it down, for quite some time. Would you guys like a copy of this?
Yes, please.
Yeah, hot off the press, we just got them in this morning.
You have three of them?
I don't, actually.
You have another copy at your office?
Whoever, whoever comes to the meeting will get their own copy.
Commissioner Kessner will read that, and he'll give us the flip notes tomorrow.
Oh.
I, I think we have, we're supposed to only send a six, but I need a little more of the boxes, so we, we should have enough copies of this, so we can hand out some to the public that comes in, and if you guys do need another copy, I'll be on the get.
And even though you might not be attending, if you think of other questions, or if somebody comes to you with some questions, send them forward to us, and, and we'll, we'll get them.
Ad, ad with them, that's kind of how you could press their questions.
Sure, sure. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to have this meeting with you, just get some of those things out on the table, so that we can.
Well, hopefully, I'll.
I will be at the meeting, and both of you will review all 602 pages of that, and get anything to me that you want me to carry forward.
I've already had that in the control, and I've proved it all.
I'll suppose.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for listening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good day.
You too.
Also, Todd, after the 2002 fire season, I could hear, I feel like, lost all the sage grouse.
Did you want to see that?
Chief Press.
I would say there was a little more there than Chief Press. Yeah, but, your point?
Why is that?
So, as I understand, the map, it should be. Yeah, those are active mining claims, there's no such thing as habitat. This is SFA. So there is not SFA, but there's every down core habitat, PHNA down in the lower end of Tucker Hills. But I believe, I believe it's only GHNA general habitat, right up to the border of existing Tucker line, and then the south north, but that is not.
I'm just reg, like, in a ODFW radius map, the radius over the top of.
It goes over the top of the existing line, but it's general habitat? Yeah, so with, with our plan, there's really no additional restrictions with that.
So, I could hear it's not, or like mine, it's not inclusive in this withdrawal, nor what's.
Great, thank you. Kevin, you want to come on up for a little bit? We've got a 10 o'clock mental health contract amendment coming up.
That's later.
Yeah, but in the meantime, I'm waiting for that. We can start anywhere you want, you've got a copy of the agenda, you want to start? Any other place there?
I can go, I can go over state contracts, I'm thinking of operations vary. It's a intergovernmental agreement between State Oregon and Lake County, proving and authorized and oversized oversight. proving an authorized oversight of the way to be able to travel county roads. It's ten, I'm thinking it's a ten-year agreement. And then they call us one to approve permitting on any of our roads. So if we have a concern for issue, we can.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a straightforward. Next one on the list is rock production stockpile contract that we put out for the Dog Lake project, first, first two and a half miles of. And Lake County Road Department Rock Production Recommendation to Award the Bid or Tent to Award, there is a time period after our intent to award that other contractors have dispute. You can see up here how this, anything I do on each two, the prices that came back were eighteen thousand fifty yards. Night river appropriation, one hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred dollars.
So the process for tomorrow, Kevin, would be is to, I'm sure, possibly award the tent before it goes through the timeframe contingent upon. And Lake County will probably give us the right direction, but tomorrow.
In the, in the bidding documents, there's seven days for dispute from any contractor. This is, this is.
At seven days, we beat it through today, so.
Well, after, after.
Okay, seven days after.
And, and even that dispute is straightforward. There's, there were some calls, like, there's no reason I can't discuss this about our cost in hauling. The original intent of our notice to bidders was to put out for within twenty miles. And that was to encourage more bids in this area to try and get our costs down relative to. Doing that, our hauling costs are out of it because of our kind of encouragement of larger areas that even get.
Our hauling cost can all be part of our match also, correct?
Yes, separate from this, I'd be, our hauling costs are matched towards our grant, that grant process and so.
And.
The twenty miles was intent to encourage local business.
Absolutely, absolutely. You sort of have a radius of plot that's available.
So if that's in black and white there in front of you, then intent to award night river cooperation for that amount. And then like I say, that, that process is available for dispute, but we'll wait and see what takes place during that time period.
Sounds great, thank you. We have a few more minutes, yes?
I can probably get two additional.
Okay.
Our annual certification of financial assurance for the closure of landfill. So the EQ has documentation of our financial and obligation of the cost of closure. There includes estimates there from Mark Vayner Associates and co-balance of what is there available for closure.
You know, Kevin, and I think it'd be, you know, this is the first year for you're dealing with this, but I'd like tomorrow, I may be including, I don't know. We need to include the N, but just the cost that we're putting in way exceeds what the projection is. And we all know what the projection is, is going to exceed the actual cost of closure if we're permitted to have the new landfill. So I guess where I'd be going with the discussion, and not today, but just for us to think about it is what leeway do we have if, if we've already collected in a, in a fund in excess of a hundred thousand dollars more than what even the top projection is to close it and monitor it?
Or we're going for a new small landfill exemption. We will be closing the one and spending quite a bit of money on that. Hopefully that carryover money that we're over can go towards building towards a new closure fund. But by O R L, if I'm not mistaken, there's a percentage you have to do pretty much every year.
Well, that's the discussion I'd like to have with those that, you know, year after year, we just need, we had that obligation to add that amount to the closure fund. But at some point in time, you know, when we have a new hopeful landfill, the life expectancy is going to be such that we're way out in front on our collections. And there's nothing wrong with having the money set aside. But as we have other priorities, it'd be nice to know what kind of liability we have with those dollars. So we can talk about that more.
Well, here is just the documents that show what we have, what the projected cost is for that Lake County. And then Mr. Winter said, like, my assumption was that that balance is available to utilize for Thomas Creek. The new permitting process is in place right now.
Yeah.
It's moving forward. Which is a renewal application for stormwater discharge. This document was filled out shortly after I started here, but there was a misunderstanding on the use part handle on Lake County line being the landfill manager of having a legally authorized representative be the chairman of the commissioner. It's a renewal application that goes along with new Thomas Creek permitting process and is a renewal application, so.
And Kevin asked me a little bit about this this morning, and I asked him to just add it to the agenda. And I, I think it'd be just fine to go ahead and by consensus have you sign it up for Mr. Chairman to give it.
That's, yeah, that's fine. When we look back through the other renewals, it was the chair, who was the chairman of the commissioner, that signed it up? Yeah, no, that's fine.
And that way it's documented in our minutes also.
Subject to, to for the audience on the camera, let's take the set check again.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, it is the renewal application for stormwater discharge. It's a, it's a general permit, twelve hundred, the number's twelve hundred Z, but it goes along with the permitting process for the new Thomas Creek landfill. And this is a renewal to, goes along with the actual stormwater discharge process of what's there now, but to incorporate what will be new in Thomas Creek development.
Okay. Okay, so by consensus?
I'm, I'm good with that. If you want to carry it forward tomorrow, but it's just sort of.
Okay, so by consensus, we'll sign that. Kevin, take it on his way. Kevin, you've got about thirty seconds. You got anything else?
I do, it'll take a little longer than thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, we're probably going to ask you to jump out of that chair right now. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
How are you today?
I'm good, how about yourself? Happy Valentine's Day.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
Trace, have you met everybody yet?
I, I believe so, briefly, yes.
Before you go in to see Commissioner Winters, just but welcome.
Thank you.
Yes. So we have a couple of amendments today.
Yes.
So if you want to talk about those, we're going to, they are on our agenda tomorrow for action. Here's the data.
Trace, if you need to say anything, because I did call the state on them to find out what they were. I kind of had her cold for being honest.
Yes, I apologize for, for my novice presentation because I'm not really familiar with how this works. So I see that there is a cut of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars on Amendment eleven and also a cut of a thousand dollars on the P A S A R R. With me being fairly new, I'm not quite sure what those numbers mean. So Denise, if you have any guidance?
Sure, so on Amendment eleven, what happened was they decreased our funding for two years. Orderly thing. They added COLIC costs to, for us in the amount of twenty-five thousand each. No, they removed supported employment funding for fifty thousand. So if you look at page three of this, it shows twenty-five thousand was taken out twice. Then they increased prior funding from a hundred and fifty-six to a hundred and sixty-one twice for a difference of ten thousand and like two hundred dollars. So the offset of that is the thirty-nine nine twenty-two. But that's the difference, kind of stumbling through that.
Oh, you didn't get it?
I get fast. I'm looking at my sticky note going, I can't even read my own writing. Okay, and so on twelve, and they reallocated funds due to the number of non-Medicaid clients versus Medicaid eligible clients. And so we were reduced eleven thousand dollars. So that's what those two amendments are.
And for the audience on the, and what this is, a contract agreement with the Oregon Health Authority that oversees the mental health.
Yes, yes.
So tomorrow, we'll, we'll take action on those two amendments and get them signed. On our way.
Okay.
I see Charlie's joining us. How are you, Charlie?
Excellent, thank you.
How are you? Good, thank you. Well, once again, welcome and.
Thank you.
For a great program and relationship.
Great, us as well, thank you.
Yes.
Do you want to talk, Trace, about the staff that we've added? Please, appreciate it.
Sure, if we have a few minutes, that'd be delightful. So we've added a case manager who is Carrie Trevoe, I believe, how you say your last name. And she is already diving in and doing case management services. She's already been very invaluable. And also on the twenty-seventh of February, we have a new alcohol and drug counselor coming aboard. As well as we have an LCSW who isn't a K, it's a C Y, C A D C one. Well, she's an intern right now, who is now providing services in Christmas Valley.
Great. That's outstanding. I want to talk about Heidi.
Oh, and Heidi, yes, yes. Heidi is the new clinical supervisor and she is an LPC.
Heidi?
Heidi Martinez. And so there's lots of great changes coming down for us in the Mental Health Center. And we invite you, gentlemen, to come down and take a look.
I'd love to. I have a question for you on Bud Charlie's here, because I watch the news every night. We get the Memphis news. So the first thing when they hit me about a week and a half ago, when they made the announcement in Jackson County that they were going to cut two hundred positions over there. And I thought, well, maybe that's going to ease up the recruitment process.
That's what I'm thinking as well. So actually, we have received just a few applicants from that area that we're looking into for another case manager. And I'm hoping that we're going to get more applicants for higher levels of service such as the LCSW.
Yeah, that's great. Good.
Yeah, we have a much better climate over here.
We have so much to offer over here, it's wonderful.
And then March first, you going to have a little bit of a move?
We are working on sending the children's services over to the Marius Building. And our, our goal was to make that happen by March first. My understanding from Charlie is he's going to sign the lease tomorrow for that to start to happen. And I'm having my staff go over there and kind of give schematics on desks and phones and all of that kind of thing so we can launch those services over there.
It's been long in doing to get the separation of adults from children. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I think Charlie had something to say.
I was just going to say, it probably won't be effective until the first week of March just because of getting phones and internet and all that, so.
Takes time, but we're getting there. Very much appreciate it.
Yeah, I love the direction we're going.
We also are bringing in an expert to, he's originally from this area. You may know him, Steve Cleaver. He works up in La Lala and has done a lot of good things up in that county. He works in Enterprise La Lala County. And he's going to come in and look at me, interview some of you and talk a little bit about what we could possibly do to expand what we're doing.
Very good, Steve's very, he's very good.
So he'll be here for a couple of different visits.
Very good. Well, thank you again.
You want me to know this this afternoon, Charlie?
Thank you.
Thanks, Trace.
Okay, our next timed item is the ten fifteen, so we'll go on. Kevin, did you want to come back in?
I have a couple just department updates that should.
Okay, so you can do it from there?
I can, I can come up.
Well, I think probably best I'll just come up, because that way, Jamie, can we get you on the camera?
No, Timmy can turn the cameras, guys.
Thank you. You too. So you want to turn to the camera and talk to the.
Your supple.
Couple, couple department, couple department updates that are hot topics currently because of the weather and the water and how it moves, I guess I'll say for now. One of, one of which is a map that we've worked on here for Christmas Valley that's going to show county road responsibilities as well as the public weight and a defined map, G I S map, that we'll be able to take March first to that meeting that will show anybody who wants to see the differences as well as definitions that I'll be working on of what the public weights are.
Very good.
Well, hopefully this will help start communication in that area of the state. Second department update based on a lot of the flooding that we've had goes along with right-of-way permits and the responsibilities of the applicants as well as the maintenance and operation of their access to our county roads. And this is a document that the county has used for a long time, but there is some confusion as to driveway pipes, pipes going into businesses that carry parallel drainage as to who owns them. And in these permit documents, it states applicants shall at all times keep use or operation authorized by the permit in good state of repair, both structurally and visually, which this winter was more than what this area has seen for a little while. There's snow and debris that filled up into places that landowners haven't looked. Not to say that the county won't take care of emergency situations that need taking care of, but going forward, trying to educate on whose responsibilities actually are. Diminished resources and diminished budget. We have to kind of show the public what the difference in responsibilities are.
For this document. Both of those items, and it's a sensitive subject, but I think you just hit the nail on the head. What we used to do twenty years ago, and we did so willingly as a community member, and we had the resources to do it, is those resources have shrunk. We don't have those means, and we still have a huge responsibility to the regular county road operation. And so we can't, you know, it's, it's something that people don't completely. And so we can't, you know, it's, it's something that people don't completely, I mean, I think they understand, but they don't completely want to hear. But more, we're very clear in what we can and can't do, but that are off long-term, it's going to be.
Yep.
So.
And mostly to the public education process.
Well, public education is right. Um, there's, there's a lot of access that are longstanding, been there for a long time. And assumptions were made and work was done different times in the past. But moving forward to educate the public of whose responsibility of what is going to be, that's all that.
If I was to pull a covert out to county road, a covert and everything would be my responsibility. And it's just a.
Yeah, and all, and all that is, is in document form. I mean, it's, it's a, it's in the application road right away.
Well, that's it. When you read those.
Which is longstanding and.
Permits, that's the responsibility starts from the beginning.
Yep, so.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
You know, we have a ten fifteen, uh, item coming up here, but I'd like to take just a couple of minute break, if that's okay, and then we'll. That works. Okay. We'll, we'll take a break until, hopefully just a quarter hour.
Or government, that'll never happen.